But it is time to go ahead and call the City Council, Granbury City Council Regular Meeting. It is 6:01 PM, Tuesday, June 20, 2023, and we are at Granbury City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granbury, Texas. We are called to order. Now I would like to go directly to the invocation with Pastor Jacob Stump of Calvary Church of Granbury. Reverend?
Heavenly Father, we come to you today, recognizing your sovereignty, honoring your name, and inviting your presence into our proceedings today. Lord, you said that if my people, which are called by my name, would humble themselves and pray, and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then you would hear from heaven, you would heal our land, and you would forgive our sins. And so today, God, we come humbly before you, and we ask that you would forgive our sins, and, Lord, we ask that you would lead us away from any wicked ways. We ask that you would bless and heal our city, that you would bless our homes, our schools, our businesses, and our churches. Bless our homes with your peace; bless our schools with your protection. We ask that you would bless our businesses with your prosperity, and bless our churches with your presence and your power. And we ask today, O God, that you would bless this City Council meeting, bless our mayor, the City Council men and women, Lord, as they faithfully serve our community. And we ask all of this, in the almighty name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Stump. If you would all join me with the pledge of allegiance to the American flag and the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all. Tonight, we have a proclamation that we'll be doing shortly, and we just wanted to remind, if there is anyone that wants to sign up for a non-public hearing agenda item, please do so at this one time. There are no public hearings tonight, so everything on the agenda is available to be signed up for, should you choose. Tonight, we have an official proclamation about the monarch butterfly, and before we do that, I'm going to ask that Ms. Deborah Rawlins, if you would come up, Larry Smith, Anita Absher, and our own Connie Leclerc. The reason Connie is not dressed in orange is she just got off work. Let me give just the proclamation here. I'll read this. Whereas the monarch butterfly is the Texas state insect and is known as the ambassador of the Americas for its multi-generation, 3,000-mile migration across Canada, the United States, and Mexico, and whereas thousands of monarch butterflies travel through Texas on their fall journey south to Mexico, Granbury is located squarely on the monarch butterfly migration route, fill in the skies and green spaces with their brilliant orange and black wings as they search for nectar-rich flowers, and whereas the monarch butterfly's population has declined more than 90% since the 1990s, as researchers are working to determine the cause of this decline, some theories include loss of habitat, drought conditions, can't imagine that today, insecticides, and herbicides. And whereas, in conjunction with the National Wildlife Federation and the Lake Granbury Master Gardeners, a mayor's monarch pledge was signed as a commitment to raise awareness of the importance of creating monarch butterfly and pollinator habitats at parks, gardens, and other green spaces for members of the community to enjoy, and whereas, to satisfy the year-long commitment, the Lake Granbury Master Gardeners are maintaining a demonstration garden, offering educational classes, working with the arts and community and schools, and are hosting a Romancing the Monarch Butterfly Festival on October the 7th, 2023. Now therefore, I, J.R., Mayor of the City of Granbury, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2023 as Milkweed for Monarch Butterflies Month in Granbury, and encourage all citizens to join the Lake Granbury Master Gardeners' outreach into the community to plant milkweed and nectar plants to sustain adult monarch butterflies in preparation of their migration through Granbury and Hood County. This is given under my hand and the seal of the City of Granbury on this 20th day of June 2023. Thank you so much for coming up, and thank you so much for what you do. And I bet you have a word or two that you would like to encourage these people with.
I always do. Thank you, Mayor and council members. It's really a pleasure to live squarely in the middle of the migration route for the mighty monarch migration. The monarchs will start migrating through here in September, October, and November. So in preparation for that, we need to make sure that we have a lot of milkweed planted all over Hood County. Milkweed is the only plant that Mama Monarch will lay her eggs on. She'll fly up to 500 miles looking for milkweed. So as part of the mayor's monarch pledge and the National Wildlife Federation and Lake Granbury Master Gardeners, we've made a commitment to our county to make sure to get the word out and have people plant milkweed. We have free milkweed to give away to you if you'd like to take some home tonight and plant it in your garden. It just needs full sun and a little bit of water every once in a while. Thank you very much.
Reverend, thank you. Did you want to get some photos here?
Yes.
Why don't we split this up?
Yeah, you get the ones.
If we can put two on each side of the mayor, maybe put both of them.
There you go. Now we're going to City Council City Manager to issue encouraging statements and to recognize city staff. Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, I have a recognition I'd like to do at this point. We're thrilled to announce that the city's communication team, Jeff and Chuck, Jeff Newfer, Chuck Licata, won a TAMI Award two weeks ago at the Texas Association of Municipal Officers' Information Officers, excuse me, Conference. They submitted a video under the category of regular recurring video population of under 100,000 people or city, and there were 547 entries, and this is their first one since they've been here to get an award, a TAMI Award from TAMI-O. And their video series about Granbury's Foodie Trail won the Award of Honor, third place. And so let's give them a big round of applause. So this is the first time that Chuck and Jeff submitted their work that they produced together at the city. Here's the crystal token that goes with that award, and I think that Jeff may have a comment that he would like to share up at the dais, if possible. I think he is our communication manager and takes care of us and does a great job. Many of you have commented to me about the proactive communication that we do and how much you appreciate it, and this is just a good sign of what we do. So tell a little bit about this, if you like, sir.
A good communication person never passes up an opportunity to speak.
That's right.
So I just wanted to say, as we sat there with our colleagues from around the state, it hit me that we don't do this for awards, but we do come in here every day, Chuck and I, trying to do award-winning work. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Congratulations. You know, we've got a trophy case, and we will put this trophy out in that case tomorrow. So that's where its home will be. We look forward to having that out there. Yeah, we've got a short snippet of part of the video, right, queued up that...
All right, everybody, here's the trash can nachos. I'm gonna say mekaleka hi mekahaniho. Can you say mekaleka hi mekachaniho, ready? Mekaleka hi mekahaniho. Mekaleka hi mekachaniho. We got the Foodie Trail winner for the trash can nachos. Come on out. What else would you want? Anything else? You're just being greedy.
We've blended it so well with the correct amount of sauce, cheese, meatballs, if someone prefers, and it just really makes a lovely, super decadent pizza. Spaghetti and meatballs on a pizza that you can eat by hand, and, I mean, there's not a whole lot better.
There's no denying, this was the bar to the stars.
Sam Elliott was here, Tim McGraw, Faith Hill, all those guys sat at the bar.
Small bar in Chicago where Al Capone and his gang used to hang out. The building's unique, and, you know, it's not a corporate atmosphere. It's, you know, family-owned, and we run our business like a family.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm glad to see that spelled T-A-M-I-O and not T-A-M-M-Y.
Well, you know, she gets enough awards, this time for somebody else to go.
I thought she was giving them away. It's a great group. It's a great team. When these two get hooked together with the Visitors Bureau and the communications side of it, it's, well, you see it on the weekends here. You see it on the weekends, and they start about Wednesday at noon. I'm pretty well convinced. Any other recognition today? Today? Yes, ma'am?
Mayor, you know, it's one thing for us to sit up here and talk about our staff, but I love it when the community actually tells us when our staff is doing really well. I actually spoke with a little group of ladies last week, and one of them had an issue with her water, and our staff went out, and she wanted me to convey that they were extremely helpful, extremely kind, and extremely professional. So kudos to our team of water folks that take care of our city.
And at 102, 104, whatever it was today, 106, they're out there today. They are working on making sure that each of us, you know, it's comfortable tonight we go home, and there's a shower, there's an air conditioning, and that doesn't just happen. I am reminded every time I see these guys and ladies out there, it doesn't just happen. I mean, it's planned, and a heck of a lot of foresight has gone into making this community what it is. We all should be very appreciative. Thank you all, certainly staff. Let's move to the consent agenda. Now, I did comment that if you wanted to sign up on anything else, and I didn't get anything here, but, you know, you may be called on as we get into the other agenda items as we have discussions as well. But the consent agenda, all items on the consent agenda are routine, are previously discussed items will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the City Council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Counsel, does anyone want to take anything off the consent agenda? I hear no one wanting to take anything off. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Corrigan seconds your motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Passes 6-0. Thank you. Let's move to the deliberation agenda. 7.1, consider a request from Gold Creek Homes to extend a limited temporary certificate of occupancy under terms and conditions as established by City Council, and that would be an FIA 18.08, Lake Villas, Gold Creek Homes, FIA 18.08, Lake Villas, Gold Creek Homes, Amendment Number Four. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, at this time, I'll turn it over to Assistant City Manager Rick Crownover. He's been with this project every step of the way, so I thought it'd be good for him to give a report on this as we move forward to consider this action.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Mayor, Council Members, Rick Crownover, ACM. This is a request for the applicant, Gold Creek Homes, to consider extending the limited temporary certificate of occupancy for six months. As most everybody here knows, the apartment's located at 1,000 Quiet Cove, has been operating under this for some time. The development has also been responsible for off-site utility improvements located at lift station number two, adjacent to Pearl Street and Waterview Retirement Home. During the construction of this, the AT&amp;T had some utilities damaged, a big trunk line that is nearing completion, I'm happy to report. It's supposed to be finished by the end of this week. And after that, as everybody knows, Pearl Street's damaged, and that's going to have to be repaired, and it may take some time to do it, but that will be supervised by the state. That is state right-of-way, and so that'll be the next step. There is a short list of punch list items that needs to be completed. I'm happy to report that the lift station has been operating very well, been performing well, both of them. There's another one that they constructed on-site, and it's been performing well, too. However, the emergency generator does work good. There's an automatic transfer switch that needs to be added to that for emergencies to sort of kick on. They need to, they damaged a little bit of Lake Granbury right there beside the bridge. They will need to de-silt and revegetate some of that to BRA standards to their approval. I mentioned the right-of-way repair, and in addition, on the FIA, they will need to provide a two-year maintenance bond for the entire project going forward. They do have some cash security on hand with the city. That amount is listed in your staff report, and everybody knows we've extended the FIA several times, and we're, tonight, we're recommending, staff recommends approval of these temporary certificates of occupancy under the terms set forth by the Granbury City Council. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. The applicant was invited tonight. I don't see any of their representatives here tonight. They may be, I just don't recognize them, but anyway.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. Rick, it sounds like most of this is out of our control, even if we didn't approve the FIA, which, I mean, we can't repair the road, that's state. Anything that AT&amp;T has to repair, that's AT&amp;T's responsibility. We can't repair that. And then the silting has to be done by BRA standards, so most of this is out of our control and out of the owner's control as well. So what it sounds like to me, is that correct?
Well, not necessarily. If they want certificates of occupancy for those buildings, they're going to have to, they're going to have to abide by the terms of the Facilities Improvement Agreement.
Okay.
And I feel certain they will do that.
Rick?
Mr. Wadley, go ahead.
How much of this work is Gold Creek Homes doing? And I know AT&amp;T is AT&amp;T, and the highway's TexDOT. Is any of this scope of work they're actually doing, completing the work themselves?
No, but they're...
I know they're responsible for it, but they're not the ones actually doing it.
No, no, AT&amp;T, they don't want nobody messing with their stuff, so they're doing it.
So I guess my question is, they say it's going to take four to six weeks, they think, to finish this, what's left, is what it looked like. Nothing about this job has gone that quickly. Should we do a year extension so we're not talking about this in six months? Or do you think six months is actually enough to get all the work completed?
Staff's not recommending more than six months. I don't want to...
Okay.
I don't want to give it any longer. Like you said, it's gone on long enough.
So this exhibit's kind of hard to read, and so let me just review this to make sure I understand what they need to do. As AT&amp;T completes their work, they need to repair the roadway, they need to repair the adjacent land with the lake, they need to repair the fence...
Yes.
Install the fencing around the lift station, and is there a sidewalk that needs to be extended?
There is some sidewalk, yes.
Okay, so they need to replace that sidewalk that was removed during their construction. Am I missing anything?
No, sir.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that on record. This exhibit in the green ink is hard to read, so I thought I'd better just spell it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
See, I, thank you, Chris. I was having a hard time reading this exhibit on the scope of work. So, Rick, I mean, I don't know what's involved in the de-sil and revegetating, you know, that area with the BRA. Is that a fairly long process? I mean, do you think we can get this done by the end of the year, all of it?
It should be able to. A lot of that is cleaning up, cleaning out what they did, the damage in there. There's, it's pretty messy back in there.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It's a mess back in there where those trees are beside the bridge.
I got you. Okay, well, hopefully, six months is enough time to get her done.
I don't know about the road. The road's in bad shape.
Yeah, it is.
And we may have, just my opinion, we may have to close both lanes to get it fixed, to get it repaired, so...
Yeah, I mean, the road's in bad shape, obviously. It's a little bit of a safety issue there, too, because a lot of people do what I do, and they drive around that area that sloughs off to the shoulder.
The engineer and I have a meeting with TexDOT this coming Monday afternoon to discuss the project.
All right. Thank you, Rick.
Counsel, other questions? Comments? Okay. Do I hear a motion that we approve a limited temporary certificate of occupancy under terms and conditions as established by City Council for Gold Creek Homes?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley makes motion.
Second.
Ms. Fairwell makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. It passes 6-0. Thank you. Thank you, sir. 7.2, consider the request of, excuse me, Rick Tarnoff, to approve a variance of the distance separation between a business with alcohol sales and a school property, the sites located at 2441 East Highway 377. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. This has been somewhat of an issue that's come up and thought we'd put it on the agenda. We thought we would put it on the agenda, and Kara has been working, our Director of Community Development Planning. Kara Wally will take over from here, our Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. We have a slide that just shows the site location, if we can have that. Thanks, Carla. So the applicant is requesting a variance of the distance between a school and a location that sells alcohol. State law has an allowance that would allow the city to grant a variance of that distance. The distance requirement is 300 feet. The properties share a property line, and so the distance between the two sites is actually zero. And I'll explain where the site is. The location is the business Let It Breed, and that overall property is outlined in pink on the map in front of you. The dot on that map is the approximate location of Suite 107, where the actual business is The Oaks School is the property immediately abutting into the south. It's outlined in blue. The drive that comes to the Oaks School is that appendage, the blue line that goes to the left and downward on the map. So there's a street there. Wish I had zoomed this out a little bit before I took the snapshot. But anyway, the actual drivable access from one site to another, you go down 377 and then to that side street and down the drive to the school. Where the shared property line is on the subject Let It Breed site, there's a building and then a access drive, which is actually a fire lane, but can provide access for loading. There's a back door that's not used by customers, per the applicant. And along that common property line where the fire lane is, is parking for the school. So more of the activities where the children are is towards the front of the school, and that's how this lines up in terms of its adjacency and proximity to each of those uses. So in our actions statement, I'm just going to read this for you. The City Council, by motion, may approve the variance and may consider additional findings for granting of the variance. Council may also add a condition if warranted. The school district was asked to review this matter to date. They have not discussed this at one of their meetings, and if approving this variance is a consideration, you may want to wait until the school board has reviewed at their meeting and give them the opportunity to provide their perspective on this item. Mr. Kaufman, if you have anything to add, I turn it back over to you.
Well stated. Y'all have any questions?
Ms. Fairwell?
This is for Chris. Have you spoken with Dr. Glenn to see if they're planning on putting this on their agenda anytime soon?
I think I heard from our city attorney something. Would you chime in and repeat what he told you?
Sure. I've asked him a couple of times about this, and he said he would talk with the school board about it, but for whatever reason, it's not been put on the agenda to discuss. I know he's not the board, but he seemed to indicate that he didn't think that there was a huge issue with this, being the layout of where this school is and the affected property being on 377 as a thorough, you know, a major thoroughfare that goes through there. Really, kind of what this comes down to for you guys is going into the TAVC code, and it's 10933, Section E, and it kind of lays out some parameters there for you to be allowed to grant the variance. That's kind of been my communication with Dr. Glenn.
Other comments? Yes, Ms. Fairwell, go ahead.
I was just going to comment, maybe it would behoove us to, we don't, I don't need to make a motion right now, but maybe we need to consider going ahead and postponing this indefinitely if we don't have a date from him on when. I would, my preference would be for this to actually go before the school board, before we make a decision on this.
Other comments?
Mayor, I concur. I think the school board needs to weigh in on this, probably talk to school, you know, hear back from the administrators and cert, administrators, and certainly the, certainly the school board to weigh in on this, in my opinion, before we render a decision, one way or the other.
I know that, you know, what counsel just said was that we've asked a couple of times, and I know that there have been at least two school board meetings that have gone past. I'd like to just read what the Texas Alcohol Beverage Code allows. The Commissioners Court or a county or the governing board of a city or town that has enacted a regulation under subsection A, which allows the sale, of this section may also allow variance to the regulation if the Commissioners Court or governing body determines that enforcement of the regulation in a particular instance is not in the best interest of the public, constitutes waste or inefficient use of land or other resources, creates an undue hardship on an applicant for a license or permit, does not serve its intended purpose, is not effective or necessary, or for any other reason, the court or governing body, after consideration of the health, safety, and welfare of the public and the equities of the situation, determines is in the best interest of the community. And I read that simply to say, nowhere in there is the school board required to do this. I understand, you know, I'm not, I'm not, being a good neighbor, I would say, yes, I would like for them to be saying, yes, let's go ahead and do this, but I don't know how long my patience would be to continue waiting. I think the council needs to make a decision. Yes, Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, I kind of agree with that statement. I don't know if the school board would ever make a decision or ever put it on an agenda item they're not required to. How long do we have a time limit that we're going to put on that and come back to this item? That would be my question. You know, this is, the other questions I have is what type of alcohol they plan on serving, and did they do due diligence on looking at the TAVC laws about the restrictions within the proximity of a school?
Mr., do you want to address that, or, Mr.?
Is he here?
Yes, Mr. Tarnoff, would you mind coming to the podium and addressing those concerns? I know that they've been discussed. Thank you, Kara. Thank you, Kara.
What can I answer for you?
Mr. Rodriguez, go ahead.
So the two questions is, did you do due diligence, uh, of the location that you were purchasing and deciding to run this type of business? And when you made a decision to, uh, sell alcohol, did you understand the T A B C licensing regulations in accordance with the proximity of a school?
Yes. The T A B C and the City of Granbury's codes are different when it comes to feet, where the state of Texas or the T A B C is asking from front door to front door at, I believe it's five hundred feet. And I also, in doing that due diligence, supplied a letter to the school that I hand-delivered myself, as per the T A B C, to them in October. That my first application went in October of twenty-two. So I, I gave them that letter in October of twenty-two, of which they have never had any reaction whatsoever to it. Um, so in doing my due diligence, yes, because I did not know that the City of Granbury was going to come back to me and say that, no, we go property line to property line.
Is this what is written in the code?
Yeah, the code, uh.
Does it say front door to front door, or does it say property line? Jeremy?
Yeah, no, our code is, is, uh, property line.
State code is front door to front door.
What's the difference, distance for state code?
And, and so there, there are a few differences. If we're talking about a church, it's measured property line to property line. But when we're talking to, very strange, when we're talking about, uh, schools, there's actually, uh, an allocation of authority in the T A B C code given to cities and counties that says you can make this three hundred feet if, if you choose to, and you can make it door to door or property line, property line. So where you would measure door to door in a church, some council at some point decided it was going to be the three hundred feet, and we're going to measure property line to property line, and so it's within the three hundred foot, um, halo there. So that, 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 that is our ordinance. And while I understand and appreciate what the applicant is saying, that he did his due diligence on state law, he obviously didn't do his due diligence as to the local ordinances.
Thank you for clarification. Um, what type of alcohol do you plan on serving at your location?
Beer and wine. And as far as serving at my location, I've also allowed the council to decide that for me. My original permit was for what they called a T A B C permit BG, which would allow sales of wine and beer and onsite consumption. I am more than willing to negotiate, no problem, if you want me to change it to a B Q permit, which would allow off-site consumption where people will not be. I don't have a, my store is six hundred, eight hundred square feet, six hundred feet of usable space. So I don't have tables and chairs on the inside. I have a table on the outside and possibly two more bistro chairs that I would, and are tables and chairs I would add to the outside for people that would like to have themselves a tray and maybe a glass of wine or, or a beer. But if, if the council would request that I not do it that way, then I would certainly comply. I just want to be able to offer that as a part of what I do for my business. It, it kind of goes hand in hand.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Wiley?
I, I found in reviewing this real interesting in that the property lines do abut, but it's the back of the building where, where Let It Breed is, and, and the patrons wouldn't be going to the back of the building. Um, I'm assuming there's a fence around the school. I did, I was going to drive over there and look at it. I did not today. Um, and, and I'm also assuming there's no gate on that side. And so when you look at it from entrance to entrance, it, it's a long way around. And then I also, in reading the T A B C regulations, and, and Eddie said, thanks for the clarification. I'm not, I'm still not real clear on it. Jeremy, I guess this is for you. They've got a lot of stuff in here, like the three hundred feet, and then they have a thousand feet, and they talk about if you're five floors up, and they, they talk about front door to front door, and they also talk about just properties. What is your understanding from what you reviewed about this? Like, how, how close? I, I understand we have a city regulation that says property line, but what is a T A B C? I, I, I'm, I'm not clear on their regulations. Can you explain that?
So the regulations are what you're reading there in front of you, uh, on, on one oh nine, the three hundred, the thousand. Um, what you don't have here is the complete code. And so there are provisions in other sections of the code that say, cities and counties, if you would like to, we grant you the authority to change these numbers, and you can make it three hundred from property line to property line for schools and door to door for churches. And so that, that authority is not, you're not going to find that in what you're reading in front of you. But it, it is in another section of the code. At some point, there was a city ordinance that was enacted that elected to take the state up on their offer of three hundred feet from property line to property line, and that's, that's what's in our local ordinance.
See? Right. So, you know, when I look at this from, just from a logical perspective, I, I don't see how people in a couple of bistro tables in front of that business, up there in the corner, could have any interaction with the school whatsoever. I mean, I, I don't, I, I, so I'm trying to, in my mind, weigh, you know, what the purpose of all this is. And I understand that the, the, the property line's abut. But, you know, and I'm also looking at the school property. There's all parking on that backside. I'm assuming that's, I guess where the, where teachers would park or whatever. And the entrance, my kids went to school there. The entrance is two-thirds of the way down the building. And, you know, now the way the schools are, you know, the school properties are controlled, nobody can go in without being able to be buzzed in anyway. Now, I also, in, in trying to understand the purpose of the law, is the purpose to keep patrons from the business, from interacting with the school, or is the purpose to keep kids in the school from interacting with the business? And, and so, yeah, again, I don't see any, any way, looking at the drawing there, that there's going to be any kind of free flow of folks from one place to the other, anyway. That's, I guess, my comment.
Other comments?
Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Burwell.
Mr. Tarnoff, did you say that you, where'd you go? Did you say this process with the school started in twenty twenty-two, where you left them a letter requesting information or, or confirmation that you could do this? Okay. If, if you don't mind, yeah.
It's a, a very long process of application filling out, um, through the T A B C. When we got to the part of the distance, and where I read the, and if I'm wrong, am I wearing codes, ordinances, whatever it is, was front door to front door, I took into consideration that if you were to leave my front door, the shortest, the actual access road is on Davis Road, and we'd be talking about well over a thousand to fifteen hundred, two thousand feet to where you would get to their front door. I also looked at that little access road that goes alongside the building that we're in that is locked, except for when they're dropping children off or, or taking children away. And, um, even there, although I did not go over it with a wheel, we did take a wheel, a contractor friend of mine, from the access road to where the Chevron station was on Davis Road, on the corner there at three seventy-seven, to see if they were in compliance as well. And that was, they were, I think, eighty feet past what compliance was. Just based on that distance, even if you went the side of my building, I am more still, I am within compliance of door to door. So in your, I, I think I forgot your question, to be honest with you.
I just want to know how long this process had taken you, as far as when you notified the school and you were looking for information or, or something.
October. And that's what the T A B C required me to do. I downloaded their, their letter. I signed it. I hand-delivered it to the school secretary at the front desk and said that this needs to go to your principal. That was, I'm thinking around October twenty-two. I could be wrong on the date, but it's, it's there and abouts. Um, and yes, that's, that's when I did that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Other comments? So, yes, Ms. Burwell?
I, I guess I'm thinking out loud here. I didn't realize that the process had taken this long with the school, um, without feedback from the school. I always have a hard time with these sorts of things because these always open doors for other issues. But this is an, um, sort of unique situation, and I would hate, you know, a couple of bistro tables to keep you from serving your patrons. And the Chevron thing, I think that they're under a different set of rules because they don't serve onsite. They, they sell in the, in the, you know, in the bays in there. What's that? And it was there before the school? Okay. So that's a different set of rules. But to this point, and again, just maybe worth considering changing, um, maybe we, ultimately, we're going to have to make this decision. Maybe we give it another meeting timeframe. Maybe postpone this definitely to the next meeting and give the school one more chance to, to pipe in on this. And that would give our, our applicant here, um, some definitive answers. I'm trying to come to sort of a middle ground here.
Mr. Kaufman?
The school board's already met this month, and so they, they be, I think, the third, I don't know what date it is, but it would probably be July or August before we would be able to flush this out after a school board meeting. I don't know the exact dates. Maybe somebody in the audience does. I don't know. Do y'all know?
I don't know. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez?
I, I'd like to direct the staff to, uh, provide information to, um, to the council, uh, the different type of, of licenses that he was referring to. He referred to an onsite license, and then he referred to an off-site license. Is that, I think that's, as I heard, the different type of license. And, and I'm speaking for myself. I would prefer it be an off-site license than an onsite license. And, and I will give you my reason is, if it's in my control and I was making a decision, the last thing I want to live with is somebody that may have drank one or two more than they should have, uh, during the day, and something happens, and it's not in our control, it's not in your control, it's ultimately in the, the, that person that was consuming that alcohol's responsibility. But if it's my decision, I would prefer it to be off-site, and, and I would feel comfortable. Uh, and that's, that's my decision. That's my opinion. Uh, and that's all I have.
Yes, Ms. Burwell?
I think that the purpose that he's trying to accomplish here is to do this onsite, though. And I, and this, again, my own opinion, but if you're having it onsite, there's probably more of an element of control as far as serving like you would a bar. They can over-serve, underserve, or cut people off. I don't have a full interpretation of the statute. I don't know if, you know, what the different licenses are. That's my interpretation, and that's my understanding of what you would like to do. Correct? Sure. Sorry.
I'm not, um, intending on serving wine by the glass.
Okay.
I am, I want to carry seven or eight different types of bottles of wine and work with a local brewery and serve, and, and sell some beer. Very similar, and the, the, Mr. Rodriguez, um, I mentioned a BG, which was malt beverages and wine sales with onsite consumption. And then there is a permit B Q, which is malt beverages and wine sales with off-site consumption, similar to that Chevron station on Davis Road or any other convenience market where you could buy it, but you don't go and drink it there. I, and I, and as I mentioned before, madam, I, I am perfectly fine going with off-site sales. Would I like for people to be able to do whatever they want to do? That's fine. My, my initiative here is to be able to establish the sale of wine and beer to go with my cheese and meats and everything else that we do. Nothing more. But as far as selling it by the glass, I have no intention of doing that. I do not, I'm not a bar, anything like that.
Thank you for clarifying that. I misunderstood that.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Phil?
Yeah, thanks for that clarification. I guess I envisioned, and I apologize, I haven't been in your, been in your shop there, but what I envision is people come in and, you know, ordering a charcuterie board and consuming it there with a glass of wine. That's kind of what I thought. So that doesn't go on today? No? Okay. All right. Well, that, that kind of alters my thinking on that. I think the other one, too, as Trish pointed out, I was looking at the letter you sent. It was dated June ninth. But as you mentioned earlier, you communicated with the school back in October. So my opinion is they, they've had adequate time to kind of respond to you, to tell you one way or the other, or let us know one way or the other how they're feeling about having that, you know, near, near the school. So, thank you.
You know, I know that, uh, I'm, uh, reacting a little bit to my past week where I was, uh, talking with five citizens. They'd each had a, uh, issue with a particular ordinance, not this one, but their own particular ordinance. And then each one, I have, I had difficulty, uh, just taking it down the logic path as to this is why. And this is an ordinance that is different from state law and, uh, does not require school. And, and again, I absolutely want to be a good neighbor, and, uh, hopefully we are with the schools. Those are our future. But this, you know, the ordinance also says that it does, that we can have a variance if it is creating an undue hardship on an applicant for a license or permit. Been working on this since October of last year, and I know you had to go through all the other process just to get to this part, part where you requested variance. And for that reason, uh, I'm, and the fact that it's, you know, another month before the school board meets, I'm hesitant to, uh, consider extending this, but that's why we have a council. Mr. Corrigan?
I just wanted to notate that the next school board meeting is July seventeenth, the Monday prior to our July eighteenth council meeting.
Okay. Thanks. No other comments? Do I hear a motion to approve a variance?
This needs to be a three-part motion.
A three-part motion?
Yeah. So.
Just briefly, the, the, if, if you're going to consider granting the variance, it needs to be done in three parts. The first part of that is you need to, uh, move to make a finding, uh, from one oh nine thirty-three E. That's the section that you were reading. Um, I, I don't know if you guys have looked at that and who wants to make that. But that motion would go something like, uh, I move that we find whatever from that, that it doesn't meet its intended purpose, that it's not effective and necessary, or, or whatever that finding is. As to City of Granbury ordinance four point oh two point oh oh five, that's our local provision that, that says three hundred feet from property line to property line. Then the second motion would be to grant the variance to four point oh two oh oh five, limiting the distance, the separation between the cell of alcohol located on the site at twenty-four forty-one East Highway three seventy-seven. We need to be specific about the site and the I S D. And then the third part of that motion i- is really why he's here today, and that is to authorize the city secretary to make the finding of that variance because the holdup for this gentleman is that she cannot sign his T A B C application unless all of the city codes are complied with. So we need to author, you need to authorize the city secretary to sign off on that application finding that all city codes have been complied with. finding that all city codes have been complied with. And then if you want, you can condition that on either a BG or a B Q, whether you want onsite sales there, or if you want this to be for off-premises where, you know, somebody can go in, buy, buy their stuff, and take it away. You want me to re-say that all again?
No. I'm going to ask, do you think we might take a...
I think I counted like five different things there, Jeremy.
I'm sorry.
I think I counted five different actions there.
Yeah, it's five, it's three.
It's three main motions.
We'll take a 10-minute break, and let's get this formalized, so that we have an idea of exactly what we're voting on.
Counsel, okay with that? Let's take about a 10-minute break, and we will figure out the word smithing on this. Thank you. It's, we're going to be back here at, let's say, 7:02. So, 7:01, I'm going to go ahead and reconvene the meeting. I'll just make a comment. Last Thursday, myself, Mr. Kaufman, and Pro Tem Burwell attended a readout of all of the legal ease that has happened through the, the state legislature this year. So we're very sensitive, very whipped. As the gentleman said, we're going to have a readout of all the good bills and the bad bills for the cities that were passed in our legislature. The good bills will go first, that will take five minutes. We were there a day and a half. Tells you how it went. So, is there other comments? Does anyone have a motion?
I have a motion.
Ms. Burwell?
I move that we find ordinance 4.02.005 creates an undue hardship on the applicant, and I move to grant a variance to City of Granbury ordinance 4.02.005, removing the limiting distance of the separation between the site of the sale of alcohol located at 2441 East Highway 377 and the G I S D property. And I move to authorize the city secretary to find all city codes have been complied with, and direct the city secretary to sign off on the applicant's T A B C application, conditioned that the T A B C license be that of B Q for off-site consumption.
I second that motion.
Motion's been made by Ms. Burwell?
Motion made by Ms. Burwell, seconded by Mr. Wadley. Comments?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
Just to clarify, this is for a beer and wine license only? Okay, I just want to put that in my language. Thank you.
Okay. Other? Okay. We have a motion that's been seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It has passed 6-0. Thank you, Ms. Burwell. Thank you, counsel. Appreciate your help there. 7.3, Consider Awarding Bid Number 22-23-11 to Pre-Load LLC Based on Their Proposal in Amount of $1,927,000 For the Knox One Ground Storage Tank Improvements and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute the Contract. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, counsel. As you well know, this project has been reviewed, vetted, you know, borrowed funds to do so and to move forward with, and our public, Director of Public Works, Chester Nolan, is going to go over this agenda item with you, but this is a much-needed item that we've been talking about for a very long time. So, go ahead and take it away, Mr. Nolan.
Good evening, mayor, council. This particular project's for a $1 million ground storage tank. We received two bids. The low bidder, Pre-Load LLC, is a very well-known company. I've worked with them in the past on a number of different projects. The low bid was for $1,927,000. Our estimate was approximately $1,977,000, or $50,000 more. So it came in under. We would recommend the award to Pre-Load LLC and move forward with the construction of the ground storage tank. And I'll answer any questions, and Mr. Kendall, who is one of the engineers on the project, is here also, if you have any technical questions for him.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Vale.
Yeah, Chester, I was just curious, how long is this project? What do you estimate the timeframe from start to finish?
For the record, Keith Kendall, Vice President of Protect Hipson Todd. It's 300 days to substantial completion, and 330 days to final completion.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, other questions? Do I hear a motion to award the bid number 22-23-12 to Pre-Load LLC based on their proposal in the amount of $1,927,000 for the Knox One Ground Storage Tank improvements and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract?
So moved.
Mr. Corrigan makes motion?
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. Passes 6-0. 7.4, Consider Awarding Bid Number 22-23-11 to B and L Construction Company based on their proposal in the amount of $2,814,912, $2,814,912.53 for the main lift station construction and improvements, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract utilizing approximately $2.315 million federal ARPA funds, and Consider Adopting Ordinance Number 2342, amending the operating budget for the utility fund utilizing impact fee funding of $500,000. Before we go to that, is this, would this be the same bid number?
They are different bid numbers. I believe one is 11 and one is 12.
Okay. So we are going to consider awarding bid number 22-2312 to B and L Construction Company based on their proposal in the amount of $2,814,912.53 for the main lift station construction and improvements, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract utilizing approximately $2.315 million federal ARPA funds, and Consider Adopting Ordinance Number 2342, amending the operating budget for the utility fund utilizing impact fee funding of $500,000. Mr. Kaufman?
I would just caution you not to use the bid number. We will verify and get the correct bid number on the final document, but authorize the award of the lift station construction improvements to B and L Construction for those amounts listed. And I articulated that agenda item so that you would see that it's not hitting the utility fund, it's hitting the, the impact fee fund. It's a, it's a crude, it's designed for this type project because of the increased capacities that's going to be on that lift station, we're able to impact, use those impact fees. And then the other is the grant money from the COVID-19 project that was awarded in 2021, and we've got till 2026 to get those funds spent, and this is a good use, to use all of those funds. It minimizes our record-keeping, and we're spending them all in one location on approved project by the federal government. So, we're excited about this opportunity, taking grant funds and impact fees together to do a huge project that the city really needs. Ultimately, someday, I may be stealing some of Chester's thunder, someday we anticipate that this lift station will serve yet another location of the sewer plant and divert more capacity back to our south sewer plant. So, that's long-term planning. We're really working hard to plan ahead and look forward to the growth as we continue to grow. So, turn it over to Chester, he may have some more details for you.
Mayor, council, city manager, we also have one item to add to this, and that is an additive alternate, which is $35,000 is for the coating of the wet well of the project, so that it reduces the amount of corrosion and extends the life of that project. And the other is for the movement of a, excuse me, is for the movement of a generator from the old wastewater treatment plant to this site, and that would encompass another $100,000. So the total bid that we would ask the council to award would be for $2,814,912.53.
Yeah. All-inclusive of the ad alternates, what's on your agenda packet. Yeah, it's not in addition to what we've already presented. It's just more articulation of how the money's split up for the bid.
Thank you.
Comments? Questions? No? Okay. How do I, how do I verbalize this, counsel?
Just, consider awarding the construction.
Got it. Okay. Consider awarding a contract to B and L Construction Company based on their proposal in the amount of $2,814,912.53 for the main lift station construction improvements and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract utilizing approximately $2.315 million federal ARPA funds, and Consider Adopting Ordinance Number 2342, amending the operating budget for the utility fund utilizing impact fee funding of $500,000. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Vale seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. Approve 6-0.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're now going to move to 8.0. We're going to go into executive session, and executive session on items permitted by the following sections of Texas Government Code 551, and those would be Section 551 072, deliberation regarding real property, project Omaha, and G I S D property. 8.2, Section 551.074, personnel matters, city secretary and municipal judge annual review. 8.3, Section 55.1087, and that's deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, project Bluestone, project Bambino II, project IHOP, review the labor market assessment, target industry update, and site readiness assessment policies presented by Ms. Lynn DeBarnes of Wadley Donovan Gutshell Consulting. And then there's Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, pending or contemplated litigation. So given that, we are now adjourned into executive session. Okay. I now reconvene the meeting. I now declare that Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session. All council members are present. Counsel, there any?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Burwell?
I have a motion for you. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a development agreement with Corridor S I L L C for, huh? 50, oh, I'm sorry. Corridor 51 LLC for variances to the City of Granbury, parking ordinances, architectural features, roof slope, articulation, the use of onsite sewage facilities for the planned development located at 1109 Weatherford Highway.
And I'll second.
Motion has been made. Mr. Vale has seconded. No other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. Motion approved 6-0. Ladies and gentlemen, any other business tonight? Okay, there being no other business, I declare the meeting closed.